Three, so and call this special joint meeting of the city council and W. Well, it says in WPCA, but it's actually just the city council and the board of public safety. For the record, it is Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty-three. It is now six thirty-three P M. And before we get into the agenda, could we please stand and pledge the flag?
Leads to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's jump right into item number one. This is, it does not require a motion. It is just simply a presentation and update from the fire department on their supplemental first responder activities over the last six, eight months. So I'd like to turn this over to Chief Borden and Deputy Chief. Yeah, that would be great.
Everybody got a copy of the? Or safety? Since the late eighteen hundreds, City of Torrington Fire Department has committed itself to protecting life and property along fires, rescues, and most recently EMS calls. When I started as chief, the department was already doing what they call supplemental EMS response, which is a little bit different than a true first responder. And we quickly identified some areas that we can provide service further than what we're currently doing at the time. And we entered into a six-month evaluation period to look at our numbers and evaluate whether the additional call volume was having a positive impact on the community. So with that said, over a six-month time period, we were able to look at one hundred and twenty-six times over that six-month period, we were arriving before the ambulance was able to. And that's not because the ambulance wasn't able to go. Most times it was because of where they geographically were within the community at the time of call. With having our stations where they are, we were able to get there quicker for those calls. When we entered into this, we were looking at the call types we were going to. And again, the main intent was to say calls that are higher acuity such as chest pain, difficulty breathing, things like that. That's what we were focusing on. It wasn't for the average transport to a hospital for an arm, broken arm or something to that effect. What we looked at overall was the EMD codes that dispatch uses when they, when somebody calls nine-one-one for a EMS call. And there's four hundred and seventy-eight EMD codes. Out of those, we do one hundred and thirty-two presently. So out of the one hundred and twenty-six calls, that's about fifteen percent of the overall call volume that we respond to that we've increased. With the additional calls, we've had the opportunity to make a difference in someone's day by applying oxygen, taking vital signs, conducting medical interventions such as giving aspirin or things to that nature and applying safe, life safety measures such as CPR and/or bag valve breathing for somebody who is not breathing correctly. And most importantly, providing reassurance to our citizens. On the fifth slide, the EMS system is overloaded and overburdened, and that's no fault of Torrington or any other community. It's just that way throughout the country. A lot of that comes down to the Office of Emergency Management Services, their regulatory constraints that they put on everything. And what's happening in the towns are feeling the pressure of having to have med control from certain places and a lot of different things. We're going to be looking, I think, believe later on tonight, at an M O U with Trinity to increase our footprint on the EMS side for the ambulance service. And hopefully, this will reduce the burden that we've placed on our mutual aid partners such as Winston, Ocean, and New Hartford, who've had to come in quite a bit over the last summer to back up Trinity because Trinity was that deep in calls because our EMS volume has gone up as a community. And then again, we continue to keep doing the supplemental first responder. Our intent is not to take the place of Trinity or to provide a hole in the system. It's responding with them as partners just because of geographical location. You'll see on the slide there just listed some of our EMS partners and the amount of times that during that six-month period that we had to call them in for help. And that's placed a big burden on their community and they've been squabbling about it, rightfully so. So response times, the next slide. You can see on the left-hand side, Trinity has an average of about twelve point eight minutes to twelve point four minutes. So they've remained consistent on their response. So there's been no changes on that. However, on the fire side, what's interesting is we went from about a nine and a half minute response to about a ten-minute response. And that's largely due to the next slide, which is showing the response districts. So right, you know, headquarters has pretty much stayed the same. The North End Station has gone down a little bit, the actual district, not the station's responses, but the district they respond to properly. What we found was touring the Torre Fort District at the east end of the city has gone up quite a bit. And that's where these higher QD calls are really popping up on the, on the map. And I do have a heat map associated with that, but what that does, that affects our response time because it takes that much longer to get up to the east side from where we are currently stationed. And same thing with Trinity. Trinity's downtown and if Trinity's at the hospital, something like that, that's a long response time getting up there. But your high acuity calls are high in number in that area. Prior to going into this new configuration, we were averaging about two calls per day, just a little over. At the end of it, we're that about six, six and a half percent or six calls per day, which is an average of about four calls per day additionally that we took on when we started doing a few more call types because they're again, they're the high acuity calls that are, that we're always getting that we just weren't going on before. On the next slide, this is just a real quick slide to show when our, our highest vulnerability is during the day. It's usually from eight to nine in the morning till eight or nine o'clock at night. And again, that's something we're addressing with Trinity in the M O U. But it just shows the peak response times are around that time throughout the, throughout the week. Following slide is just a demographics of Torrington. We use this kind of look and see if there was any trends in our data. And we didn't come with anything at this particular time that certain demographics would be using the system more than any others. Some of the common types of calls, the list on the left reflects the types of calls that we're going to prior to the new implementation of call type. And what this is significant of is our highest one was falls. We were going to about fifty-five calls and you'll see on the right-hand chart. We've gone to more of them, but that's, that number has dropped to number three now because other calls have taken the place of it in priority and the number of calls that we're actually getting. From the next slide, again, carrying that last chart over just to show the numbers. These are the calls that we've added to the calls that we weren't going to before. So somebody who's not alert, abnormal breathing, unconscious, difficulty speaking, in between breaths, ash and gray in color, changing colors, heart attacks. We were going to before, but we're getting more people with chest pain and things like that and difficulty breathing. Out of those, for anyone who follows some of the dispatch texts that come out, there seems to be abundance of sick calls that we're getting, somebody, a patient being sick. That's because they are falling into two of the categories, which is not alert and abnormal breathing. There's six other categories they can fall into that we do not go to because they're lower acuity. Next slide shows the heat map from before and after. And as you can see, just quickly, the downtown nucleus kind of remained the same, but you can see our footprint became bigger out in Drakeville and up in Torre Fort area by quite a bit. And that explains again, the longer response times. We broke down fuel call consumptions for the six-month period, but a little bit longer. And the calls are around eight, are seventy-five dollars more per call that we're using in fuel, et cetera, out of the overall monthly expenditure we would have anyhow. The impact to our community since we started this is we're initiating, we initiated care of pediatric cardiac arrest or childbirth. That was a save, initiated care and assisted for numerous cerebral vascular accidents, initiated care and assisted with numerous chest pains and difficulty breathing, responded to and initiated care for pediatric difficulty breathing and initiated care of the suicide attempt. We've administered aspirin twice, administered epinephrine. It assessed numerous patients for blood glucose levels and other vital signs that we would take to determine whether the diabetic or what their particular problem is. Initiated care and have assisted in numerous overdoses and we've been to several cardiac arrests. In conclusion, in, we've been collaborating with our partner Trinity in providing care together and with the best interest of the patient in mind. We've seen a significant change in the department's atmosphere. The members of the department seem to embrace going on the additional calls and actually having a positive impact on the community. We have the opportunity by getting into some of these homes and stuff that we normally wouldn't through our inspection, which is three families on above. We're going to single-family residential is more than we were before, which gives us an opportunity to get the building layout and see what's going on inside the particular residence and become more familiar with it. So if we have to respond back there for another emergency, we're better prepared. Community relations has improved quite a bit through just hearing people talking on the street. They seem to really like the fact that we're out there more and they get to see us more than they ever did before. And we're doing our best to make a difference in the overall healthcare. Overall, we're, I think we're doing a better job with our service delivery to the community with what we have with very little increase other than regular wear and tear items on our apparatus and a slight increase on our fuel. So with that said, our findings are that we would like to recommend to the board to consider continuing this path with the additional EMS calls that we're going on. Answer any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions for the chief?
Yes, sir. We've already spoken, but my, my question with all this is, is this enough? You know, what we've seen all of the uptick over the last, you know, and we know that the city has changed demographics and then much more needs in this town. I'm not against doing this. I want to do it right from day one. So I want to make sure that personally that this is, one ambulance is enough. I know it always comes down to money, but at the same time, I, I just want to make sure this is enough and sufficient. I don't want to hear six months from now or a year from now. Now we're going to do this, you know, unless something obviously, things can change, but that's my concern. I just want to start off doing it the right way, right off. That's all.
Just for clarification, the additional ambulance will be discussed when we discuss the M O U with Trinity. With that said, this is all kind of partnership building together that the fire department is able to go on these additional calls for timing purposes and be able to provide care to somebody who might need it sooner than having a delay if Trinity was tied up on another call, et cetera, and or be at the hospital or just geographical location. The additional ambulance need comes from the type of the call volume itself, which has gone up quite a bit. To answer your question, statistically, yes, we're going to be looking somewhere in the future to say, we have to revamp the system again. What that will look like, I can't tell you right now. But the demand for EMS out there in every community has gone up significantly across the board. So we're not unique to that here in Torrington.
Apologize for jumping ahead, but it's all, it's kind of the same, same, same story here. So that's all. Thank you, chief. I just have a couple of concerns. My concern, we addressed it before, is during the EMS call, we're tied up and a fire comes in and we don't have enough guys who responded with one engine. What do we do in a case? Well, and the second part of my question is twenty years on this board, I don't think we've heard any complaints about either Campion or Trinity about the service and lives being lost because of the service.
This isn't, wasn't based off of a complaint by any means. They're doing their part. And what happened was we got sent, started getting saturated with more call volume, which is going to be moving forward. It's going to continue to keep growing because demographics change, because people's need for EMS care has changed. The whole healthcare system has changed. So a lot of it's being pushed back to the individuals' homes and that's where first responders and the ambulances and medics start seeing a lot more than they ever did before. As far as the vulnerability that you're, we've talked about before, if we're tied up on a call, yes, there is a vulnerability. There's always a vulnerability, but it's no different than we were in a motor vehicle accident or an alarm. We can't leave that either. So as I said before, I can't predict when and if the call will come in of higher significance and how we're going to handle that. And that's why we are truly still supplemental. We're not trying to take over first responder and take on more than we can chew at a time because it, they wouldn't be good.
And just on a call on Thursday, it was on my way home from work. It was a call up at Valerie Manor. I see the paramedic go up the hill. Two minutes later, city ambulance go up. Five minutes later, I see the fire department going. And I, I followed the truck into the department, I mean into Valerie Manor. Paramedic and to ambulance crew was already in the building and then our crew went in there. So it was, it was seven guys inside Valerie Manor. And one of the nurses asked me, she says, why are we sending all these people to a medical call? When, I don't know, is there not enough the guys with three?
I don't recall the exact circumstances. That was a cardiac.
It was a cardiac code.
Cardiac code. So I believe we were dispatched originally and then turned around and then we went back because the medics, the EMTs and the medics on scene called for us to come back to assist with that. A cardiac arrest event is very labor intensive with all the things we need to get done between the medic giving medication, somebody providing an airway, which will often be the medic with the tube, but somebody still has to do a bag valve math. You have somebody to do compressions, et cetera. There's a lot of different things go on. So they need additional help on scene when it's that significant of a call.
Okay. And how does it affect your overtime?
It hasn't. No, there's no direct correlation.
And the five dollars a call, is that?
That's an estimated thing because, you know, again, we're looking at monthly and then we're just looking at the calls that we were doing, the additional calls that were, you know, currently going on because they're still the apparatus is still going out for training and different things that need to go on meetings, et cetera.
That's it.
Any other questions? I know that the board of safety has brought this matter up a number of times just for the council, council's information. And because it does have a relation to the next agenda item, which is the M O U with Trinity, I thought this was a good opportunity to hear what the issues are. But certainly no action needs to be taken. This is just the chief informing the board of safety and this board, you know, where we are. What are the demands for emergency medical services out there? And how are we best prepared to respond to those? And so Commissioner Coxwell, you had a question?
Chief, have there been any calls they've responded to where you have realized that that's not a call the fire service should be going to?
Yes, when we originally started, we were responding to psychiatric calls and what was the other one?
Seizures.
Was that?
Seizures was one.
No, there was another, there was another call that, there was two that we identified.
Oh, that was an obvious death.
Yeah, an obvious death, excuse me. That we're not going to make a difference on time because very typical with a psychiatric call. The PD will respond with us and before they clear the building, ensure it's safe for us to go in there, we have to stage. And in doing so, Trinity is usually arriving at that same time. So we looked at that type of call and said, we're not going to make a difference here. Truly what we want to be able to do is make a difference, whether it be, you know, providing care quicker or assisting Trinity with the care that needs to get done on scene, not to replace them. So they're going to do the same thing that we would be doing. It doesn't make sense to have all the agencies tied up doing that. So we stopped going that call type and obvious death is another one that we're A, not qualified to be presuming anybody and B, that we're not going to make any difference on the call.
And the reason I ask that is I thought I've seen a few in the past where I just wasn't sure why we would be going based on acuity. And so I'd asked the question over the past six months, what have you learned or what changes aside from those, do you think you would make in terms of continuing to deliver as type of service?
Well, we're again, we're looking at the, the call types every time they come in and see what's going on with it. And we also have calls where Trinity gets there before us. And when we get there, the wave is off and we go right back into service. But you have to look at those calls and say, again, why are we going to them? The problem with that is we don't have GPS units on Trinity. So we can't tell where they are or dispatch can't to be able to say that, you know, which unit is closer. In an ideal world, that'd be the way to go because then we would dispatch the appropriate units to the scene who can get there quickest. So we're constantly looking for little ways to say, can we tweak this or are there some calls that we need to back off of? Because again, we're just over and over again, it's showing that it's not a positive thing.
And you kind of let into, if this is part of the M O U, then I don't mean to get ahead of it, but you know, you say here, collaboration and partner with Trinity. One of those things I'm hearing is that, is there a way to have a direct communication? Because right now that's probably through L C D and then goes through Trinity's dispatch and, you know, and that's where I just, you know, if it's not GPS units, is there some other way that there can be a better communication when instead of just showing up and being waved off?
Yeah, we, we have to communicate a little bit more on that to figure out a way to do that. I'm not sure what that will look like at this present time, whether it's, you know, putting portable radios in vehicles, things like that, that we can communicate one-to-one versus having to go through our dispatch to their dispatch and back and back would cut that down quite a bit. And again, you know, GPS is obviously the ideal thing, but you can see it on the map, but even when we're responding with Trinity, that you don't necessarily know where we are and we don't know where they are going into the call. And they could be coming from Walmart to go down to the North End, but yeah. Or it could be vice versa.
And aside from that, is there anything else in terms of cooperation or partnering where you're going to make sure it's a good working relationship with them if you continue to do this?
Yeah, we do at least once a month we meet and we go over to if nominal with any concerns that we've had.
And that's, as we've gotten input in tonight, that's really been my concern is really the communication part and especially, you know, going to calls and I just, I don't know what that is. You know, hopefully we can find something that's a little bit better where that communication can happen in the field.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other questions and account from the council?
Do you have an estimate on how many calls? Was it the numbers?
I don't know if I have that right in front of me, but I can get that for you.
Is it, you know, a guesstimate, thirty?
Well, we're asking, yes. Yeah, but again, that it's hard, it is true. Because there are days you'll say, Mike, you might do ten and, you know, the next day you might only do two. So it does fluctuate quite a bit without any reason. EMS is very hard to predict. You know, obviously the heat wave or some severe type thing changes, you can see an uptick, but it may not be that severe.
Just my concern again is, is I don't want to get caught in a situation where we have four firefighters showing up at a structure fire when we can't leave an EMS call. That's, that's been my concern for a long time. Now we're putting firefighters in danger from doing their job, you know?
Well, as I said before,
There's callbacks to take.
Yeah, I understand the callbacks, but like I said before is I can't guarantee you two other incidents may not be happening that are not EMS related. But there's still something we would go to that we're committed to. So in any given day, I can't tell you what the next call is going to be and say that we're going to leave pieces behind and reserve and not service the customers as much as we possibly can. I don't think that's the right way to go.
No, I understand that. But we're adding a hundred or a hundred thirty more calls a month. So the odds go up.
They do go up, but I think it's for a good thing. And again, we're trained that if we're going to be responding to something with insufficient resources, that we have to change our tactics for that time being. But that doesn't mean they're not coming. It just means they're going to be delayed.
Councilman Tavon here.
Yeah, I have a question for Commissioner Benedetto. Listen, I don't mean to step into this. This is complex stuff that I do not have nearly enough information to make a decision, but I'm just listening to your questions. And so to orient myself for our purposes tonight, are you asking if this two hundred thousand dollar bump annually could be better spent?
No, this is an entirely different.
It's that's a different situation.
Okay, all right. Fair enough. Thank you.
My concern is we're at EMS call, we're tied up at that call. A structure fire comes in, now we're only showing up with four or five guys instead of eight or nine or eleven.
Okay, and that, and that.
So that can happen and now we're raising it higher because we're doing a hundred something more calls a month.
Okay, but the vote to increase to approve this two hundred thousand dollars, that's not, that is not either way.
No, that's just for another situation. Ambulance into service in the city.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And just for the board of safety's consideration, there is no recommendation for adopting this as policy. I know that this conversation came up. Commissioner Benedetto asked me to do the research as to when the board of safety last discussed this. I think it was back in two thousand and six it came up. And that was just, you know, what I could find quickly in minutes of board of safety's meetings. But we can certainly continue this conversation at the board of safety because it does not impact the budget and does not require a vote by either board this evening. So and again, just because so much of EMS services has risen to everybody's attention, you know, there are questions in the public all the time. These do go hand in hand in the sense that there is a bigger demand for EMS services. You know, we're having more overdoses. We're experiencing more people that are relying on the, the nine-one-one system for less critical needs, you know, the nosebleeds and stubbed toes. So we know that this is complicated and there's the rate fit. We just have to figure out what that is for a population of thirty-five thousand.
One question. So the M O U started with Trinity as I see in twenty nineteen.
Yes.
So just prior to really less than a year before COVID. And your data is twenty twenty-two. I'm just curious, you know, is the increase?
I apologize for the confusion. So the M O U has nothing to do with this presentation here. This presentation is about how the fire department is now responding to more EMS calls, regardless of this, a number of ambulances. This is a change in procedures. I won't say policies, just a change of procedures for the fire department. And so there is no correlation between when the, when the contract with Trinity occurred or when this new, this change of procedures occurred. The change of procedures was, and it was implemented by Chief Borden, who was coming up on his first anniversary as the fire chief of the City of Torrington. Congratulations. But it was so, it was a change of procedures that Chief Borden did adopt. He asked for six months to collect data to support the ongoing or the continuation of this change in procedures. So that's the reason that presentation is being made this evening, not as it relates to the M O U.
Yeah, you, you referenced the M O U in his presentation, so I'm just waiting to ask.
Sorry. I apologize.
Thank you.
Other questions for Chief Borden? All right, you're out of the hot seat for a moment. I'm going to jump into two because I think everybody is anxious to get to this discussion about the M O U. So for purposes of opening the floor for discussion, I will entertain a motion by the Board of Public Safety to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute and administer a two-year extension of the memorandum of understanding with Trinity Health of New England Emergency Medical Services, Inc., Trinity of Waterbury, which will include additional ambulance services at a cost of two hundred thousand dollars annually. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. Second by Commissioner Battle. All right, the floor is open for discussion and I'll just do a little background. And we have both Chief Borden and Chief Trip, but we also have representatives from the, from Trinity to answer any questions. So by way of background, Trinity Health of New England acquired the ambulance services when they purchased Campion Ambulance. That's why this date goes back to two thousand and nineteen. They also, in that process, became the holder of the P S A R. That's the primary, primary service area certificate. As the holder of that P S A, they have all of the, all of the control of providing the EMS services in the City of Torrington. They could determine what level of services are required and how best to contract for those services or employ for those services. That service certificate is issued by the Department of Public Health, Office of Emergency Management Services, Management Services. Um, that service certificate is issued by the Department of Public Health Office of Emergency Management Services, Management Services, Medical Services, OEMS. So that's, you know, the high level background of how Trinity became the service provider for the City of Torrington. They acquired Campion, they are the holder of the PSA. And we were under contract with them for four years. Uh, that contract expires the end of May. And part of that four-year contract, there were options to exercise additional one-year uh, extensions, two of them. Where we are right now, based on all of the information, some of which you heard through, uh, Chief Borden's presentation. Uh, a lot of it you're hearing rather anecdotally in the public is the demands for ambulance service is escalating. It is, uh, there is a heightened demand, um, that the, um, current staffing and ambulance, um, ambulances that are available under the contract are just not able to meet. And there has become a reliance on mutual aid from those other, uh, small towns around us. So when we went into discussions or negotiations with Trinity to exercise the, um, first one-year uh, renewal, we recognized that we do need these additional services. We do not, up until now, pay anything for Trinity ambulance services for the current staffing levels and the current ambulances that are provided. There is no charge. However, that is, uh, that was part of the contract. Uh, it was the same with Campion. That was something that was negotiated by prior administration, prior to my administration. Um, the, um, services are, are covered by, um, the patients that they transport and this, yes, yeah. So it isn't that they're doing this out of the kindness of their heart. It's just that payments are coming from, uh, the people that are directly served, treated.
Excuse me, Mayor, it was about 250,000 we were paying back when, uh, Campion Ambulance had it. That was, that was the contract.
Yes, and that was.
They negotiated the contract, they negotiated the contract, then they eliminated the payment. And they came in and they would bill the patients. That's how they made their money.
Right.
So it's actually a good deal.
So, so here we are, fast forward. We know we need more ambulance service. We know that we cannot, you know, rely on the mutual aid um, as a steady habit. Um, so when we sat down with Trinity, uh, they agreed that, um, if we would commit to an additional to exercise the extension for both years, um, that they would allow that extension. At the price of $200,000 annually. The, um, conversations as late as Friday afternoon because the additional ambulance and staff cannot be brought on board until July 1st. The, um, first year would be prorated and I think the first year is actually 180,000. You got it? Okay. So that's the high level of where we are. Um, and I just want to open the floor for discussions so that you can get the feedback or answers directly from, so questions.
Do, um, just because you say that you can provide an extra ambulance, do you have the staff to be able to do that?
Do you want to take the microphone?
Good evening, uh, councilors. My name is Dave Kraschuk. I'm the President of Trinity Health in New England EMS. Thanks for hosting us. Um, yes, so one of the reasons, um, we're pushing off until July is, um, we currently run a regional paramedic program based out of Winstead. And, um, that contract is expiring for us on June 30th. So we are transitioning, uh, that staff. Um, if approved into, uh, these open roles, we have, um, adequate licensed vehicles. We're licensed for, um, 24 ambulances by the state of Connecticut. Um, so we have, uh, space in our building. We have adequate fleet. We have adequate equipment. Um, and we have personnel that are ending a, a current in place agreement and coming in, um, July 1.
Other questions or comments?
Oh, just again, information for my part. The PSA that you were assigned PSA?
So the state of Connecticut, uh, through its regulations allows the Department of Public Health to, um, assign those primary service areas. And what it is, is essentially a restricted trade certificate that gives a provider, um, exclusive right to service the nine one one work in a given community. So, um, it's incentivized to, um, be a good partner, invest in capital equipment and really make a commitment to the community, um, versus having, um, it treated like a commodity that perhaps goes out to bid annually or every other year. Um, so a service.
I'm sorry, sir, but there is no bid process at the state level for these essentially.
There is not. This goes back, uh, this, this regula- regulatory effort goes back thirty some odd years.
Really?
Whereas, um, you know, communities were seeing a bid process. Um, so for example, you can imagine, we came into Torrington on year one, purchased three new ambulances, hired a bunch of staff, uh, put up a building perhaps, invested in all of that. And then a year or two later, a bid process occurred and it went to the lowest bidder. Suddenly, um, municipalities were finding themselves in a situation where it was not, um, there was not, uh, an interest in submitting for those bids because it was turning over so quickly.
Uh, price controls, where is that at the state level?
Uh, we are a rate regulated industry, so the Department of Public Health, um, sets the rates, um, that were authorized to bill consumers, um, for those emergencies.
So oversight at the state level through that agency?
That is correct. And so you as the municipality also have a, a legal opportunity to petition the department if you're ever, um, dissatisfied with the performance of the entity holding the PSA.
All right, could you repeat that one more time? Not that I have any interest.
Sure. Sure, yeah. So, um, regulation allows for the chief elected official, um, to petition the Department of Public Health to, um, re- potentially reassign a PSA assignment.
Yes.
If in fact there are bona fide performance issues.
Okay, this ask, uh, of yours for the additional ambulances, does this have to go through the state in some way? Do they have to, uh, sign off on this?
It does not, sir.
Okay, this is all internal to your company?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner McLeod.
I, I have no issue with Trinity at all, but my understanding six months ago, nine months ago, whatever, in our meetings, we were discussing um, the PSA in control of the city.
Yes.
And we've had no discussion since really about that. I know it's been some internal discussions. So, because I, I'm just thinking obviously they still have it now.
They do.
Yeah, so we can't go out to bid, but that's kind of what I'm asking.
Yes, so I was calling for the last question so that I could add this. So with this two-year extension, first off, with the four-year contract that we are under, Trinity did agree with the City of Torrington that they would work with us to petition the state to get the PSA assigned to the municipality so that we could have better control over, uh, what those services look like. Uh, you know, and, uh, be able to be a little bit more nimble if we were unhappy with the, um, level of service. Uh, we worked with Dave and, uh, reached out to OEMS, uh, Dave Trip, excuse me, Deputy Chief Trip. Um, uh, Assistant Chief Training Officer Shopee and Chief Borden. We reached out to OEMS, um, sent a letter with all of our supporting documentation, including a letter from Trinity saying they would support the transfer of the PSA to the municipality. Um, but there seems to be some misunderstanding at the state level as to how, what that process looks like and how it happens. So what we know is this is not something that happens overnight. We did, by the way, also bring in Representative Cook, who was instrumental in crafting some of the legislation not so long ago to fine tune how the PSAs are um, assigned and, uh, what the process is for, uh, a petition to um, contest the assignment or, um, or have it reassigned. Uh, so over this next two years, what I am proposing to the boards is that we will utilize this time to do a deep dive into EMS services, including, um, our EMS plan, which is due for a rewrite. Um, in that EMS plan, by the way, are all of the benchmarks that we have established for response time, you know, what, uh, you know, what those services should look like, what the staffing would look like. Um, so this two-year period of time affords us an ability to do all of that and continue to petition OEMS to get that PSA assigned to the municipality. So still a goal. We are confused. I don't, I, I don't think I'm overstating it when I say confused when we got that response from OEMS. Um, as they say, um, you know, Training Officer, um, Shopee did a great job pulling all of this together and submitting that, and that was in January. Um, and within 24 hours, we had a response from them saying, yeah, that doesn't work for us. So still working on it, Commissioner. Um, we won't let it go and we're incredibly grateful that Trinity has been, um, true to their word when they said they would work with us to get this accomplished. Um, so we'll keep at it.
I have a question for Trinity. How is this extra ambulance going to impact the city? Is it going to eliminate, um, the fire department showing up 126 times before you guys? Is, what kind of impact?
So presently, on average, um, the city receives mutual aid from, uh, neighboring towns seven to eighteen times per month. There's, there's wide variation there based on that. Additionally, um, when we get to status zero in the City of Torrington, we are shifting our resource from Waterbury up into the city. And we are executing another 365 transports a year with Waterbury resources. It doesn't mean that an ambulance is responding from Waterbury to a nine one one call. It means they're already in the uh, the, the geography, the immediate geography and ready to respond. But, uh, to your point, that could be one of those instances where, you know, if they're not in Torrington proper, but on, on, on Route Eight coming up, um, that the fire department gets there first. Um, how it changes the fire department's response, sir, you know, um, the beauty of EMS is it's delivered 169 different ways across the state of Connecticut and you as a municipality get to decide what that looks like. Um, you know, from, from our perspective, EMS is the ultimate team sport and, um, there are certain untangible benefits to having the fire department there to support us. A, scene safety, um, it's additional folks watching our back when we're in a potentially uh, difficult situation. It does potentially make us more efficient. Um, you know, when we've got people to carry bags and help move a patient, um, it helps turn us around a little bit quicker. Um, there's opportunities we're exploring with our medical director to see if we can get, uh, the fire department to maybe take some patient refusal. So right now, if we get called out to a motor vehicle accident, you know, two or three cars involved, there may be a patient who needs to go to the hospital, but then we're obligated to then interface with everybody involved in that motor vehicle accident and obtain a, a, a refusal of treatment and transport, which can be time consuming. Think how great it would be if we could just EMS could focus on that patient, get him loaded and on route to the hospital while the fire department then executed those, those refusals. So I think there's a real opportunity to, uh, build upon the foundation that's there and take advantage of some of those efficiencies. Um, you know, to, to commit to what exactly that looks like tonight. I don't know that I'm in a position to do that. But I, 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 I think you will see a, um, we should definitely see a decreased reliance on out of town mutual aid and what we've experienced and, and seen from, um, you know, our neighboring communities is they don't want to come into the City of Torrington for the, the lower level calls. They, they're not answering that, that request for service. Um, so in partnership, I, I feel we have an obligation, um, to do something. And, and the only way to do that is to add the resources that are needed in this community. Uh, to the chief's earlier point, uh, this is a, intended to be a 12-hour um, BLS, which means basic life support, so EMP staff ambulance, um, seven days a week, 12 hours a day, eight to eight during that peak time. When we do a demand analysis, we look up all the calls in a given hour and see where, how often that outpaces our needed availability. We're fortunate that we have a, a hospital located right in the community, which, um, keeps our turnaround time low in comparison to somebody that needs to travel out of town. However, as health systems and hospitals also do consolidations, um, more and more things are going out of town, not staying in the community hospital. So if you're having a heart attack or a stroke, um, you're sometimes being diverted to a tertiary care center to receive specialized treatment. Um, so that, that is some of the things that take us out of town as well.
Uh, Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Yeah, currently is there, um, what do you use for, what is the board, what is, what does this board use for evaluation of this process? Do you have, how, how do you evaluate the service providers?
So the evaluation, so if I may, the evaluation of that is done by the EMS committee. Under the EMS plan, there is a committee that consists of hospital, representation, uh, the fire department, myself. Um, help me, who else is on the EMS committee? Uh, Trinity, um, LCD, LCD. So the, um, all of the metrics for response time, you know, are written into that EMS plan, which is approved and adapted by the Board of Safety. But all of the measures are monitored, uh, by the EMS committee. And then recommendations would go back to the Board of Safety if there's a recommendation for any change in that plan.
Okay, and you guys get, how often does this happen?
So the EMS plan is a five-year plan.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. No, I'm currently, what is, what is, what, what is the review? Yeah, how often do you review performance of this?
So admittedly, admittedly, the EMS committee is, um, supposed to meet, uh, twice, four times a year.
Quarterly with, with two reports back to the Board of Safety.
Right, so.
Times a year to safety?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Twice a day.
Four times a year?
Right.
So you guys look at this four times a year?
Admittedly, yes, but admittedly during the pandemic, it was not happening.
Yeah.
And we did have to get this back on track.
Okay. Okay.
Councilman, we do provide monthly, uh, a monthly, um, dashboard, if you will, for the Board of Public Safety, um, that outlines number of calls, past calls, response times.
Perfect, okay.
And we attend their meetings monthly as well to, to address any concerns.
Doing due diligence, I, I don't appreciate that.
This, but yeah.
Know that I hear there's a lot of sort of um, plans and, and gray areas here still, so I'm trying to figure out what's solid. All right, thank you.
Uh, yeah, Councilwoman Hana.
And this is the number one thing I get calls about, so I know that it's an issue, that there is a lot of concerns out in the community about. Um, you currently have in, in the MOU that we have, you have two vehicle staff 24 hours a day and then like the EMS vehicle as well.
Yeah, so, uh, two, two ambulances, one at the EMP level, one at the paramedic level, 24 hours a day. And then there's a 24-hour, you've probably seen it's a Chevy Tahoe.
Yeah.
That is a, uh, paramedic level supervisor, um, who is available to respond with that lower level ambulance. So, uh, generally the way it works, uh, when it goes, a call goes through the nine one one triage process, if it's appropriate for an EMP level vehicle, that vehicle is sent and reserves the paramedic, which is the higher level of care for a more acute call, um, so that, that, um, Tahoe can first respond with, um, the BLS ambulance or it can respond to another call.
So we're basically adding half of people.
That's correct. That's, that's where that peaks the measure.
Let's say we're getting a whole new ambulance, because we're not, we're getting one just for, I understand a higher response time for 12 hours a day.
But, but there was, there was a methodology for determining what level of additional services required based on where the calls, when the calls were occurring. You saw that graph on Chief Borden's uh, um, presentation, based on when the high volume of calls are occurring, that's when the staffing of that additional ambulance will occur.
Yeah, I did see that. Um, the, so we don't pay for the first three, which is, I guess I had never given it any thought, right? I guess it makes sense because the consumers do pay. What would the $200,000 in this extension be going for?
So, um, so the value that you get in your EMS system current day is 2.3 million dollars of expense. Um, the challenge i- in what has not kept up with the cost of inflation is the reimbursement, uh, in particular on the government payers. So our Medicare and Medicaid population, which represents about 70% of the business that we do. Those numbers have not changed. So to, to put it in perspective, you know, we are rate regulated for an EMP level call, we may bill $813.
Right.
However, if it's a Medicaid recipient, we're reimbursed $183.70. Um, so I, to put it in perspective, a single dose of Narcan is over $70. Um, so, um, generally the only thing that's keeping us afloat, um, in operations such as this is volume, right? So we have a low number of resources in this community, uh, low cost, but our volume, because it's so high, we can sustain that. By bringing in this third vehicle, um, there's not the volume there, you know, we're anticipating those up to maybe 20 past calls plus the 365 we're doing with our Waterbury resources. I need about 800 calls at an average rate of $353 in reimbursement to. I need about 800 calls at an average rate of $353 in reimbursement to break even on that. Uh, it's just not there to get us there.
When you reference volume, why you keep looking at the old guy? Let me ask you this, uh, just, is just from my knowledge again, is, is there, because I've just entered the Medicare program system. Is there, is there a difference between payouts for Medicare Advantage programs versus Medicare Supplement programs?
There. That's an excellent question.
I'm sure it is.
Best advice I can give you as a consumer is do your homework on your Medicare Advantage plan.
I'm not asking recommendation. I'm asking, are you seeing, are you seeing a, a big delta between the payout?
Yes, because the, the vast majority of the responsibility falls to the patient.
Yeah.
In a minute, the minute something flips from a commercial payer or a governmental payer to a patient payer, our average recuperate is about 3%.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, this is, this is part of a much larger conversation, but my God, the ripple effect of what's happening with this, you know, bipolar Medicare process is astonishing and whatever, nevermind.
No, I, I'm listening.
I have one more follow-up question.
Please.
For you, Mayor, or maybe for safety management better. Um, are you guys seeing other municipalities have to do the same thing where they're needing to step up? So they're needing to add money into MOUs that they maybe didn't have to in the past?
I honestly, I have not, I have not communicated with other municipalities each, as you heard Dave say, there are 169 different ways that EMS services are provided. So what we do here in Torrington is vastly different from what Waterbury does. Um, or vastly different from, uh, a municipality that, uh, it is their fire department that's providing the services. So this gives us two years to really, as I said, do that deep dive. What does this look like for us? For a city of Torrington, the size, you know, the size that we are, 35,000 in population. What makes sense for us economically? You know, what makes sense for us, um, you know, with the response, a great responsibility to make sure that our citizens are served. So a lot of really, uh, heavy lift to do and I'm, uh, grateful that we are able to take this next two years to be able to do that.
And just the, uh, peace of mind, you said it costs how much to operate in the city? $2 million?
2.3 million dollars is our current spend.
So we're getting that for 200,000 a year.
That's correct.
Yeah, when we, uh, the mayor and I spent some time and we added up all of our unit hours. So every hour an ambulance is deployed in this new model would be, uh, 29,565 unit hours. Uh, you're paying $6.76 an hour.
And I appreciate your patience with me because I made him run that, you know, these models seven ways to Sunday before we landed on the one that we felt would adequately, no more than adequately sufficiently serve the city. Other questions or comments? Because this is the Board of Safety's vote first, and then I have to get the council to vote. Um, I am going to call this motion to the Board of Safety. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, by the council, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute and administer two-year extension in the MOU, uh, which will include an additional ambulance, additional ambulance services at a cost of $200,000 annually. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Aldrin, second by Councilman, uh, Kevin Arrow. Um, final call for questions.
No, I'd like to know for the record, I will support this because of the word emergency in the services. Um, there are just so many questions that were just opened up today. And clearly this is public safety, this is not mine, but as the city councilman, I asked a vote on it. So with the ripple effect, I trust that the people who have made this decision to move forward have made the best decision. So, um, I'll support it, but I really welcome a lot more detail on how this is all working out. Wonderful. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, and, uh, I do believe that the city council does have as much an interest as the Board of Safety. Um, because this is about serving the citizens. So you will see EMS plans coming to you when they are approved by the Board of Safety. Um, and when we, uh, send out, uh, an RFP for, um, somebody to help us um, do this deep dive into EMS services, it will be coming to this board. So. All right, uh, item three. This is, um, a motion for Board of Safety. I'll entertain a motion to approve Mission CIT LLC of West Hartford, Connecticut for promotional testing services. Not to exceed $18,000 from the fire department promotional test stress psychological account.
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cogswell.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman McLeod. Uh, questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any? Motion carries. Um, and then this to the council, um, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, administer the contract with Mission CIT LLC of West Hartford for promotional testing, not to exceed $18,000 from the fire department promotional test stress psychological account. Holy cow, there's got to be a acronym for that, right? Thank you, Councilwoman Riwett, and second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're going to jump now into, um, the, uh, reason for tonight's joint meeting, which is, um, to review the public safety budgets. Um, and we'll take this one, um, each of these individually, you all have received your copies of the, um, budget proposals. Um, or the budgets as presented and approved. So, um, I will start before I open this up and entertain a motion. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge, um, and express my appreciation to the budget subcommittee. Um, that, and the better part of, um, six or eight weeks reviewing these um, budgets in great detail. Um, and to, um, our comptroller, Robyn Stancielli, who's here, and deputy comptroller, um, Cam Aviles, who is also here. So with all that said, item number four, I'll entertain a motion uh, to discuss, I'm going to actually shorten this, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the public safety miscellaneous budget for fiscal year 2324. Uh, the Board of Sa- Safety having already approved these to advance to the city council. Um, so this would be a, a motion to be taken at the city council level. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
And second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. All right, the floor is open for discussion. Um, I don't know, Chief Walden, would you want to just go over the highlights of what this, what this budget is?
Miscellaneous budget or my?
Yeah, uh, oh. Yeah, it is the miscellaneous. I'm sorry. I don't need you to read that one. I was thinking emergency management. Questions on the miscellaneous budget? I'll field those if there are. Uh, the one line item that we are still in the air about is the, um, fire hydrant fees, which is in this budget. Uh, but we will, um, button that down since the Torrington Water Company, um, was transferred to the to, um, Aquarian. We're still finding our way through their hierarchy as to how to get that invoice. If there are no questions? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item five. Moving into the fire department budget, I will entertain a motion again. This is the city council. I want you to motion to approve the fire department budget, um, as presented for fiscal year 2324.
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Minijam. My second by Councilwoman Hona. And the floor is open. Um, Chief, do you want to go through just the highlights of this budget?
Sure. Um, item number five, two, two, three, which is our educational, uh, we saw a 56% increase and that's to come for four new recruits for the Fall Academy. At about 32,000, uh, 5230 is our masks, SCBA and oxygen, um, thing. So we saw an increase there about a thousand dollars or 15%. Our building maintenance budget is, um, a little skewed. So I'm going to ask Chief Tripp to just explain because there was a change in the way we do that budgeting item.
So the building maintenance last year, uh, with James DeCoret and the facilities, 75% of our budget went over, was transferred to James. So this 45% uh, increase is actually a decrease in our budget, um, from 22,000 to $10,000. So that's kind of that, that 45% really doesn't exist. It's just from last year's numbers.
Office supplies up, uh, $200, uh, or 13%. Our physical exams, uh, we saw an increase of about 11% and that's due to a contractual, um, increase with Consentra who does our annual physicals. New equipment were up about 41% or $9,000, which is reflective of the 380s we'll be buying out of the next, this, uh, budget once approved. And our capital cuts are 45,000, uh, due to the tools and the, um, grant that was awarded to us. And, uh, again, building maintenance is zero and, uh, 15,000 in training is removed. Along with that, the bomb, oh, can I move the next one? Oh, that's six, sorry. That's highlight.
All right, so that leaves this budget, um, for the council level, um, approval at I do apologize for the very small print for anybody of you that's looking at this. Um, which is a, um, actual reduction from the prior year's budget of 0.18%. Um, however, um, I will add that this budget does not reflect the general wage increases for, uh, which is item number five, 103, uh, because we are awaiting, um, final contract. Award through the arbitration process.
Mayor, the 6,261 is the prior year budget. Is that what?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. The 6,25517.
Can you read that again, please, for the record? Okay. Do you have that?
Is that what everybody? Right.
Yes. It's still a reduction of.
Yes, it is still a reduction. Yeah.
Okay. Other questions or comments? And thank you for that, Ron.
So the, the one line that we can't see is contractual either way, so we're not going to really have any influence on that line and I'm grateful that this is coming in under budget, I should say. What, but I just have a question in terms of the contract, which I know we don't have a say over, but what are they looking for in terms of an increase?
Uh, be- because negotiations are not something you just say.
Exactly. Um, got it. Okay, nevermind. I withdraw my question.
Yeah.
Confident.
Okay.
You're new.
Nothing new.
If there are no other questions in regard to, um, this particular budget, uh, then I will call this motion. And again, this is for the council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item six, I'll entertain a motion to approve the volunteer budget for fiscal year 2324. Uh, in the sum of, I'm going to add this in the form of the motion, in the sum of 80, oh my goodness, 80, 8,500. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Riwett.
Second.
Second by Councilman Minijam. All right, the floor is open for questions, um, or comments, or do you want to, um, add anything for, um, an explanation on this budget, Chief?
Uh, yes, the volunteer budget kind of stayed on par, but it did see a slight reduction, um, in training and equipment. That's just due to the sheer numbers of volunteers at this time. Um, not as many people in the department taking training opportunities. So we're able to reduce just a little bit for now on that for this fiscal year.
We were able to authorize, you know, some ARPA money, you know, to the voluntary departments for equipment. So hopefully that helped as well, but.
Absolutely.
All right, if there are no questions, I will call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item seven, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the police department budget for fiscal year 2324. Hold on, I'm going to make it as part of the motion, uh, in the sum of Drive a motion.
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Minijam. Second, second by Councilwoman Riwett. All right, Chief Walden, do you want to go over the highlights?
Good evening. Um, our budget, uh, went up from last year, uh, 3.7%. Uh, we were, we cut, um, approximately $95,000 from last year's budget to this year's budget, but there were several increases as a result of wages, uh, wage line items, um, and salaries. Um, are, we're fully funding our deputy chief's position, which increased our budget, uh, by 6, oh, 64,000. Uh, regular wages were adjusted, um, as an increase of about 141,000. Uh, and as the mayor had stated, we're also in contact negotiations with our union. So this does not reflect, uh, any general wage increase um, for the union. Our overtime budget, uh, we're, um, because we are so shorthanded, uh, we're down 11 officers right now. Uh, our overtime budget has been high. We've increased that by 30,000. Um, we've also increased our lump sum payouts for those that are retiring, uh, by an additional 30,000. The comptroller, myself, the mayor, the deputy chief, we discussed, uh, an adjustment in that, um, because of the people that are retiring. Um, and those are all contractual obligations. There are utilities, um, have gone up, um, so we've increased that, uh, because they've gone up significantly over the last year. Our service agreements have gone up and that includes, uh, items that are related to the accountability bill, which is the body cameras and the dash cams that, uh, we now have to have. Um, so that went up 21,000. Um, we are, uh, our communications, our cell phones. Uh, we flip-flopped a, a line item there. So, um, that pretty much remained flat, but our communications, which includes the modems for our cruisers, uh, and, um, things along that line, uh, that was a $30,000, uh, line item. Our capital reserve increased, uh, $83,355. Uh, we have to start replacing, um, our bulletproof vests. Uh, they're reaching their, the end of their life cycle and, um, it's a significant, uh, cost associated with those vests. It's not for the entire department. Uh, we stagger it. So, um, several officers over a period of years, over the years, we replaced, um, I, those vests for those officers. So it's not an entire department expenditure. Um, we've increased our, uh, additional tactical vests for our tactical team or cert team. Um, we have to purchase two vests for them, uh, at a cost of $17,800. Uh, we're looking, our current canine, um, is being, uh, going to be retired, uh, soon. Uh, we're looking to replace that canine so that we can pay, pay two, uh, canine officers, uh, or two canines, uh, within our, um, agency. Um, that's a cost of about 16,000. Um, the employee assistance program, we've increased, uh, 17,000. We had, we're focusing significantly on officer wellness and the stresses that, um, they're facing right now. So we're, uh, we have different employee assistance programs. We're getting to, we're starting to look at a, a wellness app, which is for the officers to be able to, um, anonymously, uh, reach out to, uh, people for help for, uh, things that they see, the, the traumatic items that they, uh, encounter on a regular day. Uh, so the total cost for my budget that, um, for the headquarters budget was an increase of about 300, 370,609.
Thank you, Chief. And again, uh, until the contracts are fully negotiated, um, that wage lineup is increased is a reflection of those step increases for, um, officers and longevity increases as opposed to a general wage increase. Questions?
The question in terms of, I know the challenges we've had in terms of recruitment and retention. Has it improved at all in this last fiscal year?
We were up a couple of officers and then, uh, as soon as we get up, they go down. You have people leaving for other agencies. We have, we're competing against other, other departments throughout the state. It's not, you know, again, it's not just Torrington issue, it is a statewide national issue as it relates to recruiting. But we are, we are a lot, our percentage is a lot lower than most of the departments within, within the state right now, as far as.
The percentage of attrition?
Part of, attrition is a part of it, but a big part of it is that you have younger officers that are leaving for other departments with higher salary, higher benefits and pensions. So we have, you know, so it's hard to keep these younger officers on the department when there's other agencies that are hungry for police officers. If they have the vacancies and it's just easier for them to transition over to another.
Other questions?
Just a comment, you know, I'm to me, you know, as what I hear in terms of public safety is probably a primary concern of, of people that we represent of our neighbors and this environment where violence and I feel it's, you know, four percent increase is certainly reasonable. And support it with great confidence.
Thank you.
Mary, this has been fully vetted by, by.
What a safety. What a safety, if you have any comments. This is a joint meeting. If there's anything you need to add.
I would just add, through subcommittee and the board, yes, absolutely. And, you know, there's a lot of changes within the police department, absent, you know, the issues with recruiting and retention. And I think Chief W. Chief and the command staff have done their best, stand on top of it. They're trying to find grants in other ways, but um, you know, there's a lot of stuff that it comes up each year and they're meeting those needs and so I do feel that they have done everything possible because I certainly know each year, just with the accountability bill and so the other things coming up, there's a lot of cost drivers going into this budget each year. Aside from personnel.
Understood. My, my general sense is I don't have any, again, I don't have, I am not in the process as a councilman of doing the kind of in-depth analysis of, of the performances of this department, but I do trust this commission. I, I think they're very responsible and intelligent and I know, so I, I base my every year I, with these particular departments as a councilman, I, I base my vote on my anecdotal sense of how the department is doing based on what I hear from people I know and my own experiences, and I look for anything that's out of the ordinary in the budget. And when I see neither, I see, I see, given the changing demographic, given the many stresses that police departments across the country are facing. I just see a successfully run and managed department with a very reasonable increase being requested, so I will love, support this on that basis.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mary, could I just make a comment?
Please, yes, yeah.
Okay, I, I just want to reiterate something that Chief said. Especially with the levels of the we're down to seventy-one and we're supposed to have eighty-one or whatever ballpark like that. I, I believe it's like twenty of our officers ballpark have like around two years. And once they receive, they get to three years. See you, they can leave. And if we don't do something in this city to alleviate that, we're going to lose them all.
Yeah, that's, I do the national problem.
And I understand the money part.
I do the national problem.
I think it just needs to be known that.
Of police across the country has taken a massive hit the last several years.
Yeah.
And from people who don't, I can go into detail when I was most very recently working at ESPN, we had Zoom meetings about various programs and I was astonished by how little people understood about the, the function of police departments across the country. It was mind-boggling to me. I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I actually want to have a follow-up. Commissioner McCloud had to say, and what I heard the chief say a few times, that, you know, sort of once these officers do get a better deal, they have been three years, and you're seeing, I, I think I asked you, maybe, maybe not formally, do you think a pension really is making a difference? And if so, have the commissioners thought anything about it? I mean, there's a lot of different pension options that I know that traditional pensions get a bad rap, although it does do a lot to keep employees. Have you guys had more serious conversations about it in bargaining? I don't even know if the police department has presented it, and maybe you can't talk about that, but I'm really curious if we've had any conversations about it.
We discuss it all the time. I discuss with the mayor on a regular basis, commissioners, and Veto McCloud, Coxwell, Commissioner Battle, Commissioner McGalroy, Spina, they all recognize the need that we have to do something to retain officers within our department. Pensions are a part of it, there's no question about it. I guess, is that the one hundred percent reason? No. The other, the other percentage is that we need to be more compatible or come, we need to be, we need to compete more with the other agencies within the state where they're getting significant pumpstons and general wage increases. Waterbury just had a significant increase and they're getting, they're starting to get people from, from down south. Talking to Chief Spagnolo just the other day, he's, he's getting laterals from other departments because they've increased their salaries, they've increased their general wage increase, they bumped up their, their bottom lines and they have a lot, and, and they become a, an agency where people now can go to make different money. So plus they do have a pension as well. It's not, it's not a, a seamer's pension, but it is a pension nonetheless, and you know, there are people that are going to that. You know, we, we're trying hard. The other part of this realistically is that we live in the northwest corner of Connecticut. We try, myself, deputy chief, Commissioner McCloud is on our committee for recruiting, for interviewing new applicants. And they're coming from all over the state. It's, you know, the part of the problem too is geographics. We're trying to pull people in from the central part of the state, the southern part of the state, and we do have several officers now that live well without, out of the, the boundary of the state, of the city of Torrington that are traveling every day. We have an individual that lives in West Springfield that travels to, to the PD every day. I'm just wondering how long he's going to continue to, to travel from Springfield every day to the department. So the problem is geographics. We, we try very hard to recruit, Commissioner McCloud and others on the, on the committee, try very hard to recruit local people, but, but we're not getting the people that we would, we were getting. We also have, you know, unfortunately, in the, in the academy setting, we have departments that are recruiting current officers in the academy hired by other departments to come to their department. There are sign-on bonuses. This, this council, the mayor, the safety board approved our drop plan, which was a, which was a help. And it is holding on to the more seasoned, more senior officers. So that was something that myself and Captain Braun at the time worked on trying to implement within, within our city, and it was very, very effective for keeping some of the officers here, some, and, and it's optional, so they don't have to stay, but those that are opting to stay, it's been, it has been beneficial. And there's only a couple of guys right now. But there are, as people are starting to look to retire, they're considering the drop plan so that we can retain and keep that talent. The biggest issue is, is that we're losing, it's a huge experience dump that we're losing. And as the commissioner stated, these, these younger people, two years, three years on the job, they got a lot to learn yet. They're doing very well. We've got, and you know, supervision is a huge part of what I'm pushing, deputy chief is pushing, we're pushing supervision because it's, it's critical and it's needed for these young guys that are, young guys and gals that are coming on the job, onto the job right now. So we're, we're focusing more on the supervision aspect of, of the department. And we're, we're doing the best we can under the circumstances.
Bye.
Do you have any comments?
I think it, any, you know, the benefits, and I've been here twenty-five years, and yes, in the past, we have had people leave, but I, I think the benefits, as you, as we just, the chief just brought up, is a big factor. You know, we have a lot of young guys that are really good guys that do travel, and we'd like to retain those guys. Move the department along.
And just to answer your question more pragmatically, contracts, especially labor contracts, are under the guise of the city council. So those contract negotiations and pensions, the pension contract is negotiated separate from their, from their general labor agreement. That contract is not up for negotiations until
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five.
If I could ask, but the pension agreement only applies to certain officers, right?
Yes, it does.
So is there like the rest of the retirement, whatever there is for the retirement plan that is in place for newer officers is part of, is part of the regular contract negotiation?
Those, that is the four oh one K contributions. Torrington is one of the more generous municipalities. The four oh one K contribution is eight percent currently.
So it's just kind of established, it doesn't, they don't have conversations about it in bargaining?
No, nope.
It's just the same.
Yeah.
Question?
Yes.
Chief, are there programs in place, like career path programs, the high school and Northwest Community College to recruit?
We worked, deputy chief was just with, up at Northwestern Community College, working with retired lieutenant Mike Emanuel,
Yeah.
who is a professor of the CJ program up there. So we're going to job fairs, we're doing, we're doing some advertising. We're doing everything we can to recruit. That's your, that's your question.
Yeah, well, well, does that extend backwards into the high school? Is there a career path at Torrington High School to, to recruit?
I can answer that. There, there is, there is a pathway.
There is.
Yes. Now, is it fully established yet? I, I don't know, but it's, they're working on it, yes.
They're working on it.
Yeah, great.
We do do, you know, the SRO that is assigned to the school
Yeah.
is, I'm trying to think if it's a ten or twelve week program, I'm not sure. But they take certain guys from our department, go up, and we instruct classes, whether it's on accident investigation, whether it's on, what the detectives do, different things like that. So to this criminal justice class, and our SRO does help facilitate it.
We also have an explorer program where we have young, young individuals that are interested in the
To me, again, just winging it here, folks. And, and there's, there's, there's a lot of people trying to address the problem in different ways, it seems. We have a new superintendent. Okay. I have a sense, I only met him briefly, but I know a lot of what he was tasked to do in terms of establishing order and procedure at, at the, at the high school. It seems to me worthy of a, of a conversation, mayor, with you and, and Board of that Chair and possibly you about what would it look like to more formally construct a program within the high school that would dovetail with the Northwest Community College, so that you would have this continuity of training? And that the recruitment have, you know, began early on with a real program, let the real certificate, you know, a, a real a real program that had actual, you know, that had an actual career path that was realizable within, within our, between the high school and, and community college, you know, they just followed it. It seemed like we have a new person there and he might be very venerable to that. I just think that that kind of a thing, you know, again, more structured program in the high school would have a lot of collateral benefit as well. Just my sense.
There, there has been for years, students in, in high school could take classes at community college.
Yeah, that's not what I'm talking about. There's a lot of things that happen in this city.
The high school already works with, with the community college.
Without the leadership, without
Connection.
Without professional people who know how to actually create a path, a a, a, a field of, of training and study and, and, and basically basically recruit for a career, you know, not just an interest, but a, a real career in a, you know, an essential and, and complex sort of profession.
I know that there is.
Due diligence, and, and we've got a new superintendent at the school who's looking, who should be looking at, you know, rethinking that curriculum at that school.
Councilman, could I just interrupt? Again, we talk about this every meeting, benefits, money. The problem is, is we get these kids in to get a job and then they transfer out. Maybe it's not because we don't have movement or power, we don't have good leadership, it's all about dollars and pension.
Yeah, but Doug, Doug, what I'm talking about is if you, if you, again, this is not an overnight thing, but if you began, and if you created a, a truly substantial program beginning in high school, it's just like a farm team system, okay? And you start to build, the idea was not just to train them to do certain things, but is to build their sense of their larger purpose in the community and
Like our volunteer fire department.
The sense of obligation to the community, so that it's not just, you know, I can go work at here, there, and
The problem is, again, is you can drive fifteen minutes down the road and make ten thousand dollars more for the same job. Or a farm team can go get twenty thousand more. So we need something, be competitive, because we have a lot of, we offer a lot in the Torrington Police Department. It's not that it's a good place to work, it's just you can't blame these people for wanting benefits and wanting more pay, or even pay, I would say, not more pay, even pay with other municipalities. So the council should be looking at salaries and pension, how we recontain these people. The Board of Safety has no control over the money. We see the problem every month, but it's, it's, the problem lies with the council.
Yeah, I'd like to move the
In negotiations.
I'd like to move the motion.
Okay. So I have a, a motion to move this. If there are, I, I guess I just have to ask for a second. Do I have a second to move the question? Thank you. Then let me call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Budget discussion, and item number eight, I'll entertain a motion to approve the animal control budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four in the sum of three hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars. Thank you, Councilwoman, what?
Sorry.
Second by councilman, I need you. Right, and again, chief, if you want to just hit the highlights on this.
The increases here, again, our salaries, we're happy to hire a third full-time animal control officer as we get to the facility. Currently, our animal control calls have increased significantly. To offset the cost of that salary increase, we've reduced the part-time per diem wage line item so that we can put that additional, those additional funds into a full-time position. So we reduced the part-time position, the per diem position by almost thirty-five thousand dollars. The other increases are, our electric has gone up. We have a, a new building that's requiring more electricity. We now have the radiant heating, which is required by the Department of Agriculture, so that there's an increase there. There's also going to be an increase in the fuel costs associated with animal control. Those are the, those are the significant line item increases for our canine budget, which is about a six point seven percent.
Thank you, chief, questions?
I guess, you know, I know that we're no longer in relationship or have the other towns surrounding us purchasing or collaborating with Torrington in terms of our animal control, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, yes.
So we have no other revenue coming in and that, and collaborating with other municipalities.
No.
That's a big loss, in, in my opinion, and I'm wondering if there's been any attempt to sort of re connect or renegotiate with those towns. I've heard some of them are not having the success that they thought they would have to do it on their own. You know, which is not a surprise, but you know, we now will have a beautiful animal control facility and, you know, maybe it's an opportunity.
We, we have explored that. We are considering that. Obviously, we were, you know, it's a regional shelter, it was built as a regional shelter. But this is, you know, this is at the purview of the selection of the towns that we've come into, that we had the agreement with. Goshen, Witchfield were the two towns. We were hoping, there is a potential that these towns may come back into it, but I, I can't speak for them right now.
I would just add that those aren't the only towns. This was a regional facility. And through the cog, there are always opportunities for us to entertain those discussions as to what that would look like. Obviously, until this one was built and they knew what it was going to cost, most municipalities wouldn't even venture into the, you know, the great unknown. What does this look like? How does, how much will it cost? Most municipalities wouldn't even venture into the, you know, the great unknown. What does this look like? How does, how much will it cost? How do we contribute to the actual capital that was invested in constructing this? So it's a little more complicated. That pilot program, I thought, was a great opportunity for us to venture down that path. But those municipalities did find that it was very costly. With the additional mandates that are coming down for the state and the Department of Ag. And, you know, the temperature that you must maintain these facilities at in both the summer and the winter. They, we may find other municipalities are. Probably going to be facing more expenses if they try to do this themselves.
What are they currently doing? How are they?
They're doing that. So Litchfield, I believe, is utilizing Harwinton Services, Harwinton's Animal Control.
Harwinton Litchfield, I think.
And Goshen is, has been utilizing. The animal shelter in Cornwall. Would it help me? Is it?
Little guilt.
Little guilt, thank you, yes.
Do you have any idea what the, what their decision process was, whereby they partner with other municipalities other than Torrington?
Yeah, so the pilot program with the city of Torrington was based on per capita.
Yeah.
So we just took the cost of operating. And as you see in this department, when you're, you're looking at a budget of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And then we were also adding on to that additional police office oversight, there's an officer that oversees this department. You know, there were other extraneous costs. So we would take those costs and we broke, broke them down per capita.
Yeah.
And the small towns did find that that was cost, it was not cost-effective for them. I believe the agreement with Litchfield and Harwinton is Litchfield is paying like a per-call kind of fee. Not a per capita. So.
Are they running, so are they, those two municipalities, are they running their shelters cheaper?
They're not running shelters, they're renting from another municipality.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I know this isn't a huge budget and it's, but you know, eight percent, I just feel like, so we don't respond to other municipalities, we're just Torrington, even though we are a regional animal control.
It was constructed as a regional animal control, and I will tell you that we did receive. One point one million dollars, one point two million dollars from the Department of Ag, we're still waiting for the check. Johanna Hayes went to bat for us to get us those funds out of the earmarks in twenty-twenty. Based on the fact that this is a regional animal control facility. So we do continue to have an obligation. To present ourselves as a regional animal control facility, to do our best to position ourselves to be able to take on the additional work that would come from. Providing those services as a region.
Who did, did the state designate us as a regional? Where did that designation come from? That, that's, that's literally a, an official designation?
It is, yes. It is an official designation and it, through the cog. And this was started fifteen years ago. I think.
So we've been regional all this time? All right, well.
I just wondered, you know, I mean, what's the accountability of the. If we're receiving this money, this federal money, but we, yeah, we're only serving Torrington. Hopefully, we don't have an obligation to. Serve those other communities. Without a cost.
So if a call comes in there, well, if a call comes in from Goshen or someplace else, we just say we don't service? That, that's literally what we tell them? It's not our jurisdiction? All right, well.
Just.
Okay.
There's no problems. It's not, it's not like there's going to be a recall for that, no. If that's what you're asking.
Not a recall, just, you know.
No, there is, you know, there's an obligation for us to do our best to, you know, to, you know, present an opportunity for the other municipalities to participate. And we certainly do provide overflow, you know, if there is. This is again, sort of that mutual aid conversation that happens all the time, you know, if there's a hoarding, an animal hoarding case somewhere. You know, our animal control facility does step up and provide. Those additional resources to manage animal hoarding. And of course, you know, all those, all those costs are built out accordingly. So we're still a regional animal control facility, it's just finding those municipalities that commit to contributing their twenty-five percent to this cost. That doesn't, it's not there yet. It's not there anymore.
Could I, could I say something?
Please, yeah.
Could we bring these towns back to the table, maybe negotiate with them? See what they're paying and see if we can match it, so it brings some kind of revenue?
Yes. So what we were waiting, so when we, when both Goshen and Litchfield peeled away. We were under construction and we still had no idea what this is going to cost. Actually, there's a little bit of a, you know, a dart, you know. In the, to the dartboard here, trying to determine what are those electric costs going to be for this new facility when you have radiant heat? So we're still in that process of determining what is it really going to cost to run this? You see in this budget proposal, you know, moving away from per diem ACOs and bringing on a third full-time ACL. So I think when we're in a better position to say what the actual costs are. Then we can go back to the cog, because this is a cog initiative, you know, that the council of governments. Worked with, you know, the city of Torrington, the town of Litchfield, the, the town of Goshen. And a number of other towns. There were, there were four or five other towns that were interested. In being a part of this regional animal control, but not until unless they knew what the cost was going to be. So yes, absolutely a chance to go back at this and present ourselves. And maybe it isn't a per capita split. Maybe it is a per-call split, you know, there, you know, there may be other ways to do this. But until we know what those actual costs are, I, I can't say with any confidence to somebody what their costs will be. Other questions on the animal control facility? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to approve the traffic division budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four in the sum of five hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Kevin Arrow. And questions on this one? And then, Chief, if there's anything in here you wanted to.
No, it's the same thing there, as far as the highlights are concerned, salary, salary items, contractual issue, service agreements have increased almost five thousand. Communication, cell phone has increased and we've, our capital reserve parking has also increased for about twenty-six thousand. We're also looking to upgrade our kiosks, our parking kiosks, as well as current, our metering, our current meters are. Very extremely old and we're, we can't find parts for them anymore, so we're looking to replace our, our meters. As well as our, our traffic control signals. As you know, we. We are responsible for the majority of the traffic control signals in our city. And a lot of those are in need of replacement and repair.
Thank you, Chief.
So I was just gonna say, so with all three combined budgets, the, the three divisions within my department, our total increase was just under four percent.
All right, questions on traffic before I go into emergency management?
Our stoplights, is that, was that one company that provides that service?
On stoplights?
Yes, yeah, traffic lights. No, 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 the servicing, servicing.
We service some.
Yourself?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, our traffic division, we have two electricians that are out there.
Okay.
During the evening hours, they're, they service our boxes, the electronics and the controls, as well as the actual light heads. That you see hanging in the air.
I did not know that, all right.
All right, if there are no other questions, I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item ten, I'll entertain a motion to approve the emergency management budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And the sum of fifty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Second by Councilwoman Hona. The floor is open for questions.
The only significant increase in emergency management is the Torrington Alert System, the Everbridge, we are not budgeting for that. It was funded through, are for funding prior to this. We have, oh, how many days do we have? About eighteen hundred that are signed up for the Everbridge. I call it Everbridge, but it's a Torrington Alert System, it's a, it's a, an alert program. Be happy with. We continue to push that out to get more people to sign up, but that's increasing.
And. Fifty percent, roughly fifty percent of this budget is actually covered by the EMPG grant.
Correct, we got, we got to reimburse them. Around this.
Questions? Comments? All right, call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Minichia, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you. Next week, council, we'll do the city budgets.